Folks, gather around for this very exciting occasion. So for those of you who don't know, my name is David Mitchell. I'm the mayor of the town of Bridgewater. And I am super excited to be here. I know this has been a long time coming. We wanted to do this many years ago. There's some complications. You can all call the province and your MLA and get them to update the traffic standards. That makes it so these aren't illegal. But, you know, between Steve and our staff, we found a solution on, you know, a very busy intersection, very highly prominent, which is what we want too. But I just want to convey that this is more than just, you know, painting some colors on the road. You all know that. It's the town's way of publicly demonstrating to everyone that this is a safe, respectful, inclusive community where everyone deserves to be treated with love. And I know for many of you, it doesn't feel like that. So I fielded a few calls. Why are you doing this? Why are you spending the money? Well, because some people don't have the luxury of just walking around, being exactly who they want to be, a full, true expression of themselves without someone judging, hurting them. You don't have to go down all, you know. So this is just a small thing that the town can do to express that this is everyone's community, regardless of who you are, how you identify, whatever it is. This is your community. And so we are just, we are privileged to be able to do this. So I do want to thank Lunenburg Pride and our staff team for working together. And I look forward to the parade that's coming next month, our first Pride Parade. Town Council will be there with all of you. And so, you know, better things are ahead. Now I'll turn it over.
Geez, now I gotta try not to cry. Thank you. No, I mean, like you said, this is a, it's a small gesture in the grand scheme of things, but it really means a lot more than just paint on a road. I know people here are part of the LGBTQ+ community. They're allies here. And the climate that we're currently living in, where there is a lot of betrayal and attacks on LGBTQ folks, especially their people in rallies, you know, when, especially when we have the events in Bridgewater next month, this will show to them that it's more than just paint. You know, this is a town that is welcome and inclusive to anyone, no matter the minority that comes out and tries to speak out against us because, you know, we're not going anywhere. And it truly means a lot to me that we've worked through all the ups and downs with the rules and found a way to make it work because it's so important that we have a crosswalk in Bridgewater, especially now that Bridgewater is growing and it's going to grow in the coming years. So I just want to thank everyone who came out. And this is wonderful that it happens to be in place before Pride Week next month. So I hope that anytime you're around here, whether it's during Pride Week or not, that you'll remember this very important day. And, you know, we will just keep staying positive despite all the reasons we have not to be. So thanks, everybody.
I'm Amanda Fancy. I'm the dealer-owner of Gauss Home Hardware and Furniture. We've been at this location for about a year. We started in 1848, way back when. This is our fifth location. So, you know, we've never have left the town limits. So we're looking to build this location. You know, we had lots of opportunity to potentially look at, you know, outside of the town limits. But it was really key for us to be and continue to be a growing business in Bridgewater. Bridgewater, Nova Scotia is unique. We have a beautiful countryside. Our town is 7,500 people, but then, you know, our customer reach is about 45,000. So, you know, we're talking about lots of small communities, you know, hidden treasures. There's huge opportunity here. And I think that it's certainly worthwhile to make the visit, make the call, do some inquiry in this because it certainly is somewhere where I think there would be some, you know, strong investment opportunities for sure.
Well, my name is Joey Richard. I come from Quebec, Montreal. I've studied opera, the Montreal Conservatory of Music. So this is where I've learned about Italian, the language, and the food. And my passion just became bigger and bigger for food. I've been cooking for 20 years, almost. I opened a family business, but the only thing I forgot is that my family is still in Montreal. So I'm like, you know, I'm trying, I make new friends. I, I'm building this thing, but it is a family business here. My chef is like my brother. His wife is like my sister. So, I mean, I recreated a family environment. We do the real recipes, starting from the real ingredients. And for Italian food, what the secret is, few ingredients and very fresh. So each recipe would be like three, four ingredients maximum. But, I mean, it's just the best ingredients and makes it so delicious. If you think that it's impossible to have your own business, I'm the living proof that it is possible. People want us to thrive. We work together. So everybody helps each other. If you want to be part of a community, it is the community to be part of.
My name is Joe Holland. I'm the owner and operator of Land of Two Athletics. I found the opportunity, started this gym in my parents' garage. And now we are currently in an 8,600 square foot facility. A lot of people come here because of the community. The things that we offer here are different than a normal gym. It's an open atmosphere where you come in, the music's played over the loudspeakers, not in your ears. You don't put earbuds in and just walk around from one machine to the other. You focus on yourself, but at the same time, you get to meet new people. We have three floors, which we do CrossFit, bootcamps, athletic training, and personal training. We have so many other businesses that are growing our economy and feeding into it becoming more populated, a place where people actually stay as opposed to leave. We're growing. We're getting bigger. And a lot of people are on the same push to become a better Bridgewater. I love this place. It's my home. And there is no other place that I want, would want my business to be.
Folks, gather around for this very exciting occasion. So for those of you who don't know, my name is David Mitchell. I'm the mayor of the town of Bridgewater. And I am super excited to be here. I know this has been a long time coming. We wanted to do this many years ago. There's some complications. You can all call the province and your MLA and get them to update the traffic standards. That makes it so these aren't illegal. But, you know, between Steve and our staff, we found a solution on, you know, a very busy intersection, very highly prominent, which is what we want too. But I just want to convey that this is, this is more than just, you know, painting some colors on the, on the road. You all know that. It's the town's way of publicly demonstrating to everyone that this is a safe, respectful, inclusive community where everyone deserves to be treated with love. And I know for many of you, it doesn't feel like that. So I fielded a few calls. Why are you doing this? Why are you spending the money? Well, because some people don't have the luxury of just walking around, being exactly who they want to be, a full, true expression of themselves without someone judging, hurting them. You don't have to go down all, you know. So this is just a small thing that the town can do to express that this is everyone's community, regardless of who you are, how you identify, whatever it is. This is your community. And so we are just, we are privileged to be able to do this. So I do want to thank Lunenburg Pride and our staff team for working together. And I look forward to the parade that's coming next month, our first Pride Parade. Town Council will be there with all of you. And so, you know, better things are ahead. Now I'll turn it over.
Geez, now I gotta try not to cry. Thank you. No, I mean, like you said, this is a, it's a small gesture in the grand scheme of things, but it really means a lot more than just paint on a road. I know people here are part of the LGBTQ+ community. They're allies here. And the climate that we're currently living in, where there is a lot of betrayal and attacks on LGBTQ folks, especially their people in rallies, you know, when...
All right. Good evening. I call this regularly scheduled meeting, but to our town council's order. We have the agenda circulated for everyone. Are there any additions or deletions? Hearing non-can motion to approve the agenda circulated. Councillor Conklin seconded by Deputy Mayor Fager. All those in favor? Disposed. Motion is carried. Thank you. Just go through some announcements. So yesterday was the first Pride Parade on the South Shore, hosted by Lunenburg Pride. And it was amazing to me. It was a huge success, especially for a first attempt. I thought just the crowds were great. The floats were great. The participants were happy. People were cheering along the parade route. I know that their goal was to make it a celebration. And I think, you know, check that box. I think his mission accomplished that, that the parade was very much a celebration. And so congratulations to Lunenburg Pride and the success of that. And I think, I just say on behalf of Town Council, I want to thank the community for their support. Lots of people came out and I think a lot of local businesses were happy. The people were downstairs celebrating, or downstairs, downtown celebrating with each other. And there's a lot of local businesses participating in the Pride events this week. Tomorrow at 6:00 PM, behind the Des Brise is the Pride Flag Raising Ceremony. So all are welcome for that. I know that there is a, there is a Pride Comedy Event downtown at one of the local establishments on Thursday. I can't remember when the storyteller, the storytime is.
It's also Thursday.
It's also Thursday at the Margaret Henninger Library in the ELSI. And so they're just, I would check the Lunenburg Pride Facebook page for information. And the town shares a lot of that as well. So, and I want to thank council. Every member of council was in the parade as well. We had staff in the parade. So great representation for the community. So thanks for that and congratulations again to everyone. Are there any other announcements from members of council? I always look to Councillor Doran because he always, usually has something about him.
Drawing a blank, you wish.
It's, it's a little, it's a little slow. I'm looking at Pat. Whenever we have high heat days, we are continuing to do the free swims. So obviously they're not predictable. They're based on high temperatures. So just, you know, again, recommending people check the town's Facebook page and social media feeds regularly. And also you can download the town's, the town app because there's information there. But for sure, we had one last week when the temperatures were quite high. And so if that happens again, the free swims will continue. So just an update there. If there's nothing else, we have, we have the minutes of June 26 regular council meeting. Are there any errors or omissions with those? Hearing non-can motion to approve the minutes circulated. Councillor Tanner seconded by Councillor Caldwell. All those in favor? Disposed. Motion is carried. Thank you. And we are down to correspondence for action. 7.1, we have the Ecology Action Center's request for support, essentially to ask the province to release and implement the Regulations for the Coastal Action Act. So that was passed in 2019, but I don't think anything's really, hasn't, haven't implemented anything. So I don't know if you have any more details you wanted to add to that.
No, just that, the way they say in March, it was kind of put on hold. And originally it was intended to be put in place and implemented. Municipalities, of course, would be part of that with the, at the building permit or development permit stage. But again, it's been put on hold. And this is just basically to say that municipalities with coastal areas are left looking at how to manage development in the absence of these types of coastal regulations that would bring uniformity to the province. And they're asking that they move ahead with what they originally intended to do.
That seems quite logical. Any questions on that? Councillor Caldwell?
Would the act have any impact on our municipality, like along the river or...?
We were still waiting for the definition of coastal area and whether or not that included inland along La Haye River. And I know it comes up, but I just don't know if the definition included the town. So there was some clarity that we were seeking as part of the consultation process with the regulations.
Is someone prepared to make a motion? Councillor McDowell?
I'd move the Town Council of the town of Bridgewater endorse its support in a joint statement of Nova Scotia municipalities and the Ecology Action Center's submission to Minister Hallman, Department of Environment and Climate Change in the province to release and implement the Regulations for the Coastal Action Act passed in 2019.
Thank you. Seconded by Councillor Thorburn. Further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? Disposed. Motion is carried. Thank you. We're down to reports and recommendations. South Shore Open Doors Association, Lot 102, Glen Allen. I just, probably people are wondering, you already talked about this. Why is this back? So I'll turn it over to CAO, just to explain where we're at and then some next steps.
So in February of 2023, council held a public hearing. So notice was given and a public hearing was held with respects to receiving public input for a request to sell Lot 102 on Glen Allen Drive to the South Shore Open Doors Association for a nominal sum of $1. So for less than market value, of which we were required to have a public hearing. And that was to be used for affordable housing. And the project proposed was 14 affordable housing units and a duplex and triplex type arrangement. And council received both comments for and comments against or concern with respects to the proposal from the public. At the same meeting, council passed a motion authorizing the execution of an agreement of purchase and sale with SOTA for Lot 102. Because the project was very conceptual and lacked detail in terms of even the site plan or details with respects to the anticipated project cost, funding, business plan, those types of things, council in their motion had a number of conditions that would have to be satisfied. Normally, we would have those conditions satisfied pre-agreement of purchase and sale, or at least some of them, such as a business plan or you'd have the site plan or conceptual plan presented to you. But given that there is a deadline in March 13th, 2023, that council was advised for funding for this project. And at that deadline, with the application they were to submit, they had to have proof that they would have ownership of that lot. So the agreement of purchase and sale was intended to be that proof. That date came and went and is no longer relevant to the project. Since that date, there's been a few changes to the scope that had been discussed with SOTA. So they had received some provincial funding and they were looking at perhaps scaling back. And more recently, they're looking at making the project larger. The change in the scope can necessitate another public hearing simply because we went out to the public and said 14 affordable units in a duplex, triplex style. If we go back and you say 20 units and a multi-unit complex, it's a little different in terms of, you know, the public's feelings about giving the public land for free for that purpose. So there is a, there would be a requirement to have another public hearing to do that. In addition to that, the town has received a few inquiries about the land for other forms of affordable housing as well. Councils expressed their desire to see that lot used for affordable housing and also expressed the desire to entertain or have discussions with respects to the possibility of having Lot 102 used for affordable housing, whether through SOTA or another entity, such as the province or any other entity for that matter. To do that, the motion really restricts who we're negotiating with, with respects to Lot 102. So it says SOTA. The council wants to entertain other options. And that motion is kind of in the way, shall we say, that it would need to be rescinded to open the door for the possibility of considering other proposals. In addition, with the change in scale, and that's based on recent conversations, that it's moving from 14 to something different, another public hearing would be required. So it would seem to be perhaps a decision already made if you have a motion on the book saying enter into agreement of purchase and sale. And then you go to a public hearing to say, should we, shouldn't we? Kind of putting the cart before the horse, shall we say, if there were a change in scope. So given the change in scope and the necessity of another public hearing, the delay in receiving the information from SOTA and the eagerness of council to see some form of housing on that lot, the fact that there's no longer a timeline imposed on council's commitment to Lot 102, so March 13th's coming gone, and council's desire to look at other forms of affordable housing on that lot, you may wish to consider repealing the motion, motion 23-43, which would authorize or approve the execution of an agreement of purchase and sale for Lot 102 to SOTA with the conditions as noted. Rescinding the motion does not prohibit council from considering another proposal from SOTA. So when SOTA comes forth and they have a re-sculpted project, this still enables council to consider that. All you're merely doing is just striking that motion from the box as if it never happened at all. And when council's prepared to entertain a proposal, then you can, you can make a whole new motion with respects to the same. And as I said, it would be kind of out of order to have a motion to enter into an agreement if you go in for a public hearing to ask if you should enter into that agreement. And it also enables you by removing this motion to entertain other proposals as well. So to rescind a motion, if that's, if that's a desire under Gruenau's rules, notice is required to be given by a member of council. So council, council doesn't get council notice. A member would basically give notice that they intend to, at the next meeting, introduce a motion to rescind, motion 23...
23-043.
Yeah, -043. And then at that meeting, that member will put that motion on the floor. It'll need a seconder and then you need two-thirds majority vote to rescind that motion.
Are there any questions on that?
So that was, that was a great explanation. Thank you. So just to reiterate that it doesn't mean we can't enter into an agreement with SOTA in the future. It just, just kind of resets it because I like your explanation. If we go to a public hearing and say, should we do this? We already have a motion on the book saying we do. We're going to. It's kind of confusing. I guess I'm looking for Deputy Mayor Fager.
I'll give notice of your worship. I give notice of intention that at the August 14th, 2023 council meeting, a motion will be put forward to rescind motion 23-043, passed at the February 27th, 2023 meeting with respect to the execution of an agreement for purchase and sale of Lot 102 to SOTA.
Okay, thank you. So you're gonna need any, that's all you have to say?
That's it.
That's it? Okay. So this will be on the agenda for August 14th. And SOTA is coming to the August 7th discussion session. So they're, they're coming before that. They're, they are aware that we were doing this tonight. So this is not a surprise for the organization either. So I just want to make sure that's clear. Do you have a question?
Just August 8th, I believe, is the discussion.
August, oh, right, because of the...
Holiday, it's a Tuesday.
Yeah. Okay. Perfect. 8.2, Town of Bridgewater Flag New Design. Turn it over to Patrick.
All right. Good evening, council. This evening, we're going to revisit some direction that council gave at the May 1st, 2023 discussion session regarding the Town of Bridgewater flag. Just for background for anyone watching at home, the town's current flag was adopted by Town Council in 1993. And the current supply of those flags with this particular design is low and requires resupply, which prompted staff to approach council at the May discussion session, particularly given council's adoption of the town's new brand. And I say new loosely because it was 2015, so a hot seven plus years ago now. But given that rebranding, the time was right, in staff's opinion, to discuss the future of the flag with council. And at that May meeting, council reviewed eight concept proposals for a new Town of Bridgewater flag that utilizes the town's new branding. Council had a healthy discussion about the benefits of using the Town of Bridgewater wordmark version of our logos that actually says Town of Bridgewater versus our variant logo that has no text. It's just the stylized B symbol that looks like the river passing through it. So at the May meeting, council agreed by consensus during discussion that there was preference to use the wordmark logo as it clearly identified the community that the flag represents and leaves no room for ambiguity or confusion by members of the public. As part of that conversation, council narrowed down its field of options from the eight that were presented to three and directed staff to carry out a public poll on those options, which was conducted between May 5th and June 15th on our social media. We received during that survey, a total of 432 responses. Voters were asked to rank their preferred options in order, indicating their favorite design, second favorite design, and least favorite design out of the three that were presented. Option three, which features the town's white wordmark logo on a blue background with contoured white and green asymmetrical embellishments in the upper left corner and lower right corners that are designed to symbolize the curvature of the La Haye River as it passes through Bridgewater, was the overwhelming favorite among the folks who participated in the survey. That design captured almost 70% of first place votes. Option three also fully achieves four of the five recommended key vexillology... Option three also fully achieves four of the five recommended key vexology elements that, according to the North American Vexilological Association, make a good flag. So those elements include being simple, using meaningful symbolism, including colors and patterns, using two to three basic colors that contrast well, avoiding lettering where possible, and being distinctive. We did have two members of the public comment on our social media during the public engagement phase that the design that is proposed, all three designs that were proposed and were sent out to the public to be voted on, do go against the recommendation of having text. The vexology guide, vexology guide itself notes that there are exceptions to every rule and advises to depart from those five key principles with both caution and purpose. And that relates nicely to council's direction to poll on those three specific flag options using the Town of Bridgewater's wordmark. That direction was given thoughtfully with an eye towards ensuring that members of the public would be able to conclusively connect our future flag design with Bridgewater without hesitation. Option three also significantly reduces the wording utilized in our current flag design to a bare minimum, and it also fully avoids other elements of our current flag design that are in conflict with those vexology standards, such as the use of the town's crest, more than three colors, and overall visual complexity. So for these reasons, after public consultation, staff are recommending that town council for the Town of Bridgewater adopt by way of motion option three as contained in this report as the new official flag for the Town of Bridgewater.
Are you any questions or comments? I'll just say, because I had a number of people also say, you're not supposed to use words in the flag, but as I explained, that, that flag often leaves the town and, and goes to events, whether it's the NSFM in Halifax or another community in the province or at press conferences or big announcements that are, that are national or international in scope. And while I do respect that, you know, some would say you shouldn't need any words, if you're putting that on global, we said, the town was on global news today for the parade yesterday, but if they showed the flag and it just had the, just the symbol, most people aren't going to know where that is. I know when I sit at the NSFM and they have all the flags around the room, which is where we noticed our flag was a little, I have a date with the smoke stacks. But most do have the name of the community that, that it's in, but the ones that don't, I didn't know where those were. I didn't know what communities those were from. And so it becomes quite a challenge because you want to know what they are. So I did, I did a little research myself and noticed that most flags in the province do tend to have the wording of the county or the town or the village that they're part of.
That's correct.
Yeah. So, you know, fully respecting that you should, you know, stick to the five points, but there, there is room to maneuver around some of those. I think we've done very well for that. So maybe those, that's my two cents on that. I don't know if someone is prepared to make a motion? Oh, did you, councillor Thorburn?
Okay. I would move that town council, the Town of Bridgewater officially adopt option number three as presented in document number 23 dash zero six six eight, dated June the 30th, 2023, as a new official flag for the Town of Bridgewater.
Thank you. Seconded by councillor Hannah. Further discussion?
Question.
Question being called. All is in favor? All opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. When we update the council chambers, I'm really hoping, jealous of the other council chambers that have been updated around the province where whoever wants to speak or raise their hand, they, they push a button and then the chair of the meeting has a list of who they ordered. So I wouldn't have to do this, or whoever's in the chair next doesn't have to look around. Sorry. If you like, I'm on the swivel. Okay. Next item is the Brighter Days Campaign funding, Health Services Foundation Capital Campaign.
This is just a quick update. The report that's before you tonight references council's May 8th, 2023 pledge of $40,000 per year to the Health Services Foundation's capital campaign for the social regional hospital renovation project. We have attached in the document package, a donor agreement, which includes a little bit of additional information around recognition that the Town of Bridgewater will receive for making contributions to this project. So we'll have the town's logo and acknowledgement placed in diagnostic, imaging, and pharmacy departments within the hospital once the project is complete. So if council is satisfied with the draft agreement, it's our recommendation from staff that the CAO and mayor be authorized to execute the agreement and fully commit the town to supporting this project.
Any questions on that? Someone prepared to make a motion? Councillor Conklin?
I move that town council for the Town of Bridgewater authorize the mayor and CAO to execute the draft funding agreement attached as appendix A with the Health Services Foundation of the South Shore to formalize council's pledge commitment of $200,000 over five years in support of the Brighter Days Campaign. Thank you. Seconded by Deputy Mayor Fager. All those in favor? All opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Huge thank you to all the people who have given to what is a massively successful capital campaign. Like unbelievable, so amazing.
Eight point four, WCB top up. We gave notice for this on June 5th, but just turn over to the CAO for some details.
So presently, the town has three classes of employees. There's non-union employees, which includes, whether you call them inside workers, but town hall employees. And then there's public works parks supervisors, water and wastewater supervisors, and then, and police, it's the chief, deputy chief, admin, and IT that are all non-union employees. Then we have QB, which we classify as the outside workers, which are public works parks, water, and wastewater. And then the APA, which is the police. So three classes of employees, two, two are unionized and one is non. The unionized employees, under their collective agreements, are treated somewhat, they are treated differently than non-unionized employees when it comes to WCB benefits. So presently, under WCB, if an employee is injured and they have to make a WCB claim, 75% of 69,800 is, is covered under that, and that's the net, not the gross. And therefore, there's a gap between what you would normally have at 100% versus what you qualify for under WCB. It maxes out, the insurance maxes out at 69,800, so 75% of that. If you make more than 69,800, you still only get 75% of 69,800. If you make less, then you get 75% of whatever, whatever that, that income is. With the unionized employees, there's top up, so that tops it up to what the pay would have normally been. For non-unionized employees, there's not. We have non-unionized employees who are also working in, in conditions where workplace injuries may be perhaps a greater risk than, say, office and inside workers are. So the public works parks and police, those supervisors are in the field, working side by side with employees and exposed to the same hazards and workplace injury possibilities. However, as I say, when it comes to WCB, it's, the treatment's a little different, and that's based on how collective agreements are negotiated. So this was brought to council, and at that time, it was just noted that we may not be, council may not have been aware that there were the differences in how WCB was top up was for two classes of employees, but not the other, and suggested that perhaps council may wish to consider ensuring that the non-union employees are also provided with WCB top up in the event of a workplace injury. And so we have to remember, this is workplace injury situations as opposed to other types of sick rate that may, that may happen. And the suggestion is, is that it would be as per the collective agreements, which has a cap of six months. So if an employee is on WCB for longer than six months, the top up stops, and that employee would go down to the, to, I believe after six months, it goes up to 85% of their income, up to a maximum of 69,800. This would require a change to the personnel policy for the non-unionized employees that would provide wording to indicate that WCB top up would be provided. The recommendation is, is that it be provided for six months upon which it ceases, and during that time, the employer and the employee will continue to fund at 50% each benefits, such as pension and medical and, and dental. And then, as I say, after six months, it, it ceases. Council was provided with some samples of how other municipal units provide for WCB top up, some don't, some do, it's a mixed bag. Some take it from sick time banks, and we did kind of talk about that at the last council meeting, that that's, that works well when you have an accumulated sick time bank, but if you're a new employer and only been here for a year or two, then you don't have that, those sick time banks that someone who's been here for 15 to 20 years may have. So it puts the newer employees at a disadvantage. And then we also talked about perhaps doing six months and then after six months, taking it from the sick time bank. The amendments are drafted to make it consistent with what the collective agreement states for not, for unionized employees. So it's just six months, and after that, it goes down to whatever coverage you get under WCB. So if council's in agreement, a motion would be in order to approve the amendments to personnel policy with respects to the WCB top up as presented.
Any questions on that? I know we discussed this earlier, just want to make sure everyone understands it, so it's kind of evening things out for the various groups. Someone prepared to put a motion on the floor? Councillor Caldwell?
I move that town council for the Town of Bridgewater approve amendments to Personnel Policy 79 as attached as Schedule A to provide the Workers' Compensation Board benefit top up of wages by the employer to net wages of an employee.
Thank you. Seconded by Deputy Mayor Fager. Further discussion?
Question.
Question being called. All those in favor? All opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Eight point five, Engineering Department Restructuring.
Okay.
Coming out of our discussion session last week.
Yes, that's correct. So at the discussion session last week, Director of Engineering and Public Works, Matt Davidson, presented to council for, for information and for consideration tonight, a report that recommended some restructuring within the engineering department. So as council's aware, growth within the town has been occurring, and that growth has put impacts on certain departments in terms of being able to respond to both applications for development approvals as well as servicing growth that occurs, because there's, that's the other side of development, is, is the servicing required to support that growth. And then, and also to kind of exacerbate that, the department has seen some changes. So we've seen some employees leave and some vacancies occur, and we have been bringing in some, some new staff to replace that. Transit has been added to engineering probably about six years ago, and building inspections have been moved into community development, building environment inspection. So there's been those changes as well. We had a change in the Director of Engineering position a year ago, and we, as I say, have seen some vacancies that have been challenging to, to fill. The recommendations that are being put forth in terms of changes to the organization structure are being done with the objective of positioning the department better to respond to the challenges that growth brings. So presently, under the org structure, you have Director of Engineering, and you have the wastewater, water manager, manager of environmental services, and you have the engineering services manager, and then you have the facility manager. Under the engineering services, this was a position that was created several years ago, but just filled probably about three years ago, and it's a position that Mr. Davidson filled. And that, that position supports both operations, so that's servicing and growth and capital. So new development applications, new capital projects, project managing, those things. And what he found is that the demands of the operations side of things, so the pavement management, sidewalk, sidewalk improvements, implementing the capital plan, doing the parks maintenance, all those things took most of the time, and that there was little time left to do the capital planning, the project management, and the, and the development reviews that needed to be done. So what he's recommending and what, what I'm supporting and recommending to council for consideration is to split, split that into the operations side, which would be the public works manager, and then the, the capital and the project management and the design side, which would be the engineering services manager. And then under that, they each have their own focus, which would enable them to respond to the demands that are, are coming this way. And in doing that, we would repurpose one of the technical positions. So basically, that would, that would be removed and this, the public works manager would, would incorporate some of those duties, so we'd split that up. So the number of positions isn't decreasing or increasing, it's staying the same, but we're suggesting that you, you create this new position, you pull one of those technical positions out, because those, those duties will be covered off by the public works manager position and some by the engineering services manager position. So the budget impact is the difference between the technical position and the manager position, so roughly around $20,000 annually to support that change in the infrastructure. And it's what we feel will help better position the department to respond to the demands coming its way. Presently, the engineering services manager is under recruitment, so we started that recruitment and we're waiting for council's approval of the org structure change before recruiting for the public works manager. But once approved, if approved, we'll be getting on that one right away too. So the objective is to try to get that department up to 100% complement this year.
Any questions from council? Like a motion?
Yes, please.
I move the town council for the Town of Bridgewater endorse the recommended organizational changes to the engineering department as presented in document 23 dash 100.
Thank you. Seconded by councillor Thorburn. Further discussion?
Question.
None? All those in favor? All opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Last week, we had our discussion session, so in our, in our council package, which I'll remind, the public is available on the town website, under the council dropdown, you'll see all the agendas and all the minutes, and as always, everything that we have is available to the public. We don't have any extra notes in this agenda package that, that aren't available, so these are all there, including the notes from the discussion session last week. So we just, we talked about the item that we just moved and passed, which was the engineering department restructuring, and then wastewater utility report, which I thought was fascinating, so I would, I would encourage people to take a look at that, because I don't know where it's going to go, but I just thought it was a really interesting discussion to have. So that's in there, and so those are there again for, for people's perusal. Eight point seven is the Ludenburg County Senior Safety Program Monthly Report for June 2023. I just want to note that at the bottom of that, it talks about the Client Emergency Continue, Contingency Fund, and there is, it has a bit of a low balance. They've had some money generously donated by St. Vincent de Paul to do some items there, but if anyone out there is wondering, oh, I forgot some money I could really donate to help out an organization that supports seniors, you could contact the, certainly contact the Ludenburg County Senior Safety Program, the United Way, you can donate through them, because they support it, Bridgewater Police as well, or all the municipalities in the region also support this. So if you had questions, you could always talk to anyone from those municipalities. But when you look at the numbers of people that they help with the minimal amount of funding that they have, it's remarkable. I know I sound like a broken record, but I don't know, I don't know what we would do if we didn't have this organization in place, so. I encourage you to reach out to them if you have questions or money to help. So that brings us to the end of this agenda. We have an in-camera meeting following this to discuss an item under legal advice, under the Municipal Government Act. Also, just a reminder to the public that in July and August, we are kind of, we only have one discussion session, one council meeting, so there is no council meeting again in July. The next one is that council meeting will be August 14th, and the discussion session on Tuesday, the 8th. So that'll be the next time we see folks. Between now and then, we've got the Big X Parade, we've got the Big X Week, hopefully better weather, not too hot, we don't want any fires, but like a little bit less rain would be helpful. Anyway, so yeah, have a good summer to everybody. I have a motion to adjourn. Councillor Thorburn, seconded by Deputy Mayor Fager. We are adjourned.